I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Um, we will start with approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add? Otherwise, someone would like to move approval?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
There was an addendum that I sent out to city council. We're just gonna add the donation for Minnesota Police Chiefs Association. Um, that will be on item number four point four.
Okay.
It's for two thousand dollars. It can go on the same.
We'll just add it to four.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Um, any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The consent agenda. So if everybody had a chance to look at that, minutes from October sixth and the financials.
I have a comment on, um, under the public open forum on the minutes, uh, four point five.
Yep.
Uh, just the wording of that, it says, uh, council member Sandeman and resident Tom Whittaker addressed the city council and gave their interpretation of the public open forum. And, I don't know, I think that's worded a little wrong. I, I kinda, I requested that the public forum be reinstated. So, I don't know if that's... Maybe I'm reading it wrong, or...
Um, no, I, I, I can see what you're saying. Um, I don't know.
Or is it a request?
Yeah. Council member Sandeman requested reinstatement of the public forum. Forum and Tom Whittaker spoke.
Regarding it, or I don't?
Yeah, I think that would be, can we do that? Uh, councillor Sandeman requested reinstatement of the public open forum and resident Tom Whittaker spoke in support of it.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. So we can amend that. Does anybody else have anything from minutes or the financials?
Motion to approve as of ended.
Motion, is there a second? No, second. Second by Martha. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. New business, four point one, resolution about rental property, which got Michael his frozen.
Okay.
It's that kinda date.
Yeah, it just, I don't know, it does it sometimes. Um, so, uh, currently Three T Farms, Farms, um, buy our industrial lot. They kinda take care of it and spray for weeds and do tilling and, um, all, all that. We are approached by the same organization that has been putting on really great events at Conklin Hill to expand their event and, uh, move it across the field, onto that field. It's very low income generating anyway. Um, so what I'm asking council to do today and, um, is to interpret what the group would like to do with it. So they plan to plant pumpkins, some gourds, um, squash, and make them available for the public for free. And, uh, they had a really good turnout this last fall for the event. They would still take care of it and be good stewards of the land. They're still going to spray and make sure that things are planted in the spring and taking out in the fall. So this would cancel our contract with Three T Farms and it would, um, just become our property to maintain and manage.
There's no bridge crossing other than the highway and a little farther.
Yeah, they're working, they're working on that.
Oh.
Yeah.
So does Three T Farms know that?
No, this would be notice. We don't give notice until council approves it.
How many acres is it?
It's a little over three, but there's like a retention pond and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that include the gra, uh, the pay field or whatever that?
Um, nope, just south of that, that other field.
I don't have a problem with that.
And it'd be no cost to us as a city?
Yeah, we already pay insurance on it. We already eat the cost.
So no extra?
No.
It actually might lower our taxes because it would be for public use and public good versus rental.
And I think that group just did a fantastic job. That fall festival was.
Oh, it was.
The corn maze was amazing.
What? Just wanted to go pat a watermelon to the prop.
Good.
Another celebration, eh?
Wow.
Have a watermelon.
Watermelon days.
What do they call that?
All right.
I saw a move on the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Kelly, second by Dawn. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Any discussion? I would just say thank you. Tell Three T Farms it has not, you know, no malice toward them. We just think this is a better use of it.
And legally, they can break their, excuse me, I didn't.
Oh, that's fine.
You know, kind of break the contract or?
Yes.
Just as an annual renewal.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Others, I'll call motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, four point two, the GFW school land and building.
I'm actually gonna try to pull this up because. I know, it's pulling it out. Yeah, I don't know why Adobe every once in a while just like crashes and just doesn't like to do things.
If you were writing yourself in your office, it wouldn't do that, but now we're all sitting here.
Does it in my office do that?
Okay.
Should I hold mine up then, like?
I don't know, it's just loading.
Hold it down.
Okay. So, uh, we... Let me see if I can save it hard copy. No, I can't get into the drive.
I've got an extra one here if you wanna, if anybody needs one.
You wanna, somebody go, you wanna plug my laptop in?
No, it's all right. We'll just fly without it if I can't get it here. Don't worry, take your time. Just take your time. It's fine. Um, so we've had a lot of meetings, um, about the, the school and the football field. Uh, you know, in April, we did a meeting and then July, and we've been taking a lot of, um, a lot of comments and trying to formulate kind of an opinion for city council to see what you guys wanna do and maybe what the next steps are. So I wanted to remind everyone kind of what we've done already, uh, and, um, where we went from there. So the GFW school, um, district put out a survey in January twenty twenty-five. Uh, we had a hundred and forty-eight respondents, fifty-nine of which were residents. Of those fifty-nine, sixty-seven respondents said there are parts of the GFW school building that we would like to preserve or repurpose. And fifty-two percent of the respondents said, uh, uh, they should not demolish the building, while only fifteen percent said the building should be completely demolished. Then we held, uh, town halls. So we, we held town halls, um, twice, but in April twenty twenty-five, we really gave it a good whirl. Uh, we had a really good participation from the community and really great discussion. We talked about, you know, keeping the gyms, the locker room and the fitness area. We said maybe another, um, way to deal with it is just demolish it and redevelop it, uh, for housing. Uh, some others wanted to keep it as a civic center for kids and seniors. Some saw it as an opportunity to develop, uh, affordable housing or, uh, affordable apartments, um, for seniors. Some, on the football field side, said like, what if we put in large public gardens or walking paths or develop into family homes? And then, uh, later that year in July, we brought everyone back together. We got some engineers involved and we provided cost estimates for certain things that we were gonna do with the building site. And if, do you remember, we kind of broke the building up, right? So we asked the engineers, give us three different subsections of the building and what would it cost to keep some, what would it cost to demolish some, and what would it cost to repurpose some of them? So, um, we, uh, reached out to some companies and we said, you know, there's really three scenarios. The first scenario is we demolish the buildings and get rid of it. That alone for the whole building, take, take down and tear down, is about one point one million to demolish it. To demo just the A and B portions, which is basically the educational side or school side of the building, um, that would still be about a million dollars or nine hundred thousand dollars. The reason that really is about, is because, you know, when you, when you saw part of a building, you start to replace walls, shore it up, make it whole again. And then to demo just C and keep the rest for like affordable housing or whatever, it would cost about five hundred thousand dollars. So as you can see, um, not really great options. We also involved the engineers when we said, okay, if we wanted to renovate the building for apartments or we wanted to redevelop it into something that is usable, you know, how much does that cost? Per square foot, it's about six to ten dollars, really depending on what, um, you know, what you wanna do with it. Um, so our total estimate, um, down here is that eighty-six, one eighty-seven. This is how much square feet we would have to remodel in order to, to make it go. Again, you wouldn't have to do this all at once. I think we talked at the meetings, like you could section it off. You could try different things. Um, but we're talking, uh, big money. So if you kept Area C, um, we know that, uh, over the next ten years, you're going to have to replace things. You're gonna have to replace the ovens, you're gonna have to replace the gym floor, or the roof is leaking quite excessively. New electrical service, so unfortunately on that side of the building, the electrical service is actually on the opposite side. So you would have to pull in new lines, rewire most of it. It'll be a project. Once you touch it, it also has to be decode to wiring and let's just say some of it's not. You know, we'd also have to demolish that remainder A and B part of the building, which would be about seven hundred thousand, um, without shoring up the walls. So over the next ten years, they expect us to spend about two point two million dollars just to keep the gym and renovate it. Scenario three would be remodeling A and B and that gets really expensive. So, um, you know, per square foot, it's about a hundred and eighty to two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot to remodel it. And as, as we saw before, there's about eighty thousand square feet of building that you would, seventy thousand square feet of building that you'd have to remodel. On the lowest mid-range estimate, um, just basic, basic, um, it would cost us about seventeen point five million dollars to remodel and, um, repurpose. That's without going after grants. That's without going after, you know, anything. But I will tell you, on the grant side of things, or even if you were gonna try to deem it a historic building, that's a lot of expense. Because before you can do that, you have to prove proof of concept. So you're gonna have to have engineering plans. You're gonna have to figure out what that cost is before you can spend the grant money. And I bet you that engineering on this type of project, you know, if you just talk about a regular ISG engineering, it's about ten percent, ten to fifteen percent of, of that total. So you're gonna be spending two, three million dollars just to get prepared to go for the grant. So I just wanted to bring that up before we head into that. Deferred maintenance costs between the two, total ask, meaning keeping A and B and C and, um, boosting it up a little bit, you would spend about twenty million minimum repurposing that school, school building. So we really looked at different ways to fund this. Again, demolition only, um, you know, we can apply for a redevelopment grant. I don't know how far you want me to go down that rabbit hole, but the redevelopment grant, there's very little money to it. It seems like a great program, but only about one point five million dollars every year is actually, um, dedicated to the redevelopment program.
For the whole state.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a very competitive grant. Uh, you still have to put money forward. Um, they reimburse you. It's basically for the demolition and then if you don't redevelop it or the developer falls through, you don't get any money. None. Um, you can use TIF, uh, or levy to cover the match, um, uh, tax increment financing. Um, and then, uh, you know, you can market it and try to find a developer. Um, it's not very popular right now developing anything, but you know, you could find someone. Uh, if you look at, you know, Gaylord as a really prime example, um, I think that's gone back to them now three times, four times. Hasn't been very successful 'cause what happens is most developers say, you know, I'm gonna come in there and I'm gonna do whatever. They fill out a building permit and they say, well, this isn't to code and hasn't been in use. And it's, use is different. And so if you're gonna put residential people in here, now you have to sprinkle the whole building, you know? And then it just goes on from there. Funding for, uh, living, you know, there's public-private partnerships, um, the school can get in, in that. You know, Heartland Core Products, if they wanted some housing. Um, there are, um, low-income housing tax credits, uh, through HUD. They're not hard to get, um, I think on a, on a large scale, but I don't know. Again, you'd still have to get those qualifying documents. You'd still have construction documents and engineering that you'd have to have before you even went for that. Um, there's historic preservation credits, but you would have to prove that the building is historic and a good repair and a plan. Um, community development block grants, um, are definitely a thing, uh, through the state of Minnesota. USA, USDA Rural Development does do some, um, projects with HUD, uh, in cooperation for low-income housing. But, you know, again, that would be not a grant. That would be a loan or a low-interest, um, loan. So, uh, what we really wanna know as staff is like, what are our next steps? I think this is really about, you know, who wants to control what happens to the future of the football field and school? And, um, you know, we can start approaching the superintendent with your guidance on what we wanna do with it. We're gonna have to finalize some kind of funding mechanism because, um, a million dollars doesn't appear out of nowhere. And, um, you know, before we, we do any of that, you know, we'd have to sign some agreements with the school to start letting them know that we're gonna take control of it. The other option is letting it go to the open market. And as we've kind of seen, sometimes that doesn't, um, doesn't bode well. I know that there's been some, some individuals that have approached the school, um, a- about purchasing it and, you know, my exact reaction to that is, I, I hope they have a lot of money. Because if they wanna, you know, rezone it as commercial, it sounds really easy. You know, you flip a switch and it's not. It is zoned for public use right now and that school, once it flips ownership and goes to a commercial industrial housing development, has to meet certain specific codes for occupancy. One of the boilers I know has problems. Um, we were made aware of that. Um, there's a lot of electrical issues. Um, the solar panels that are outside of the school are actually ours. Uh, the city of Winthrop put them in in early two thousands. Sometime. And they actually feed into the school. So, uh, we have to disconnect those somehow at some point anyway because whoever owns the building or if it comes down, um, obviously that can't continue to generate power. So yeah, um, you know, we just, we're here for an open discussion about what you want staff to do next.
The, the school board really controls it, correct? I mean, the football field, obviously it'd be nice if we have that. I mean, that's not gonna cost us a ton of money, uh, we could do whatever with it. But this whole school, I mean, if there's someone that would like to purchase it, I don't think we have much to say about it.
We do. It's zoned public use zoning right now. So Administrator Palmer, when she was here, they went in twenty twenty, twenty fifteen, they went through rezoning anything that was owned by the public and that is very specific. So they would have to request a zoning, a rezone and that would go to planning and zoning first. And if they approved it, it would come to you and you'd be able to deny anything that you think is a little bit sketchy. So someone comes in, buys the building and they wanna, uh, do a marijuana manufacturing plant in the middle of town. Like that is a zoning request, um, which city council would have every right to deny.
So refresh my memory. I thought during those town hall meetings, 'cause I came to both of them, or, um, I thought we decided that we were gonna let GFW or the school kinda decide what to do with it.
Yeah.
Oh.
It is.
We're saying, do we want them to decide what to do with it?
I, I think it's that we, because of the zoning, we, we have some leverage and we have a very vested interest in wanting to see that property not rot. Yes, not rot. I mean, it's, it's the first thing everybody sees when they drive through town. And, you know, Gaylord's is at least not on the most heavily traveled path through town. And so at this point, they obviously didn't plan for it. Is there any way we can approach the school and, to me, it's inherently unfair for the residents of Winthrop to bear the full burden of dealing with that property. Same with Given, you know, because they're gonna have the same thing. They're gonna have a building sitting there and, um, what, what do you do with it? And, and there too, I mean, a city has a vested interest in wanting the town to look good and not to have a very large building slowly deteriorating in front of all of us. But they obviously didn't plan for any funds to deal with the old buildings, at least as far as I know.
What happened, uh, when Fairfax was closed? That, that somebody came and bought that? They purchased this?
They did. I think they were going to do some type of AA rehab facility. I know that they made some progress at the beginning of this year. I think they ran into problems again with, uh, you're gonna put people in that building? Well, it's over ten thousand square feet. Now it's gotta be sprinkled and it's gotta have correct code and I, I know that they made progress at the beginning of the year, but I don't know where they are at anymore. I know that Andrea hasn't, um, said.
But I'm saying the city didn't really have a, a say in that, correct?
I mean, yeah, I, I, I think that has to, it had to get rezoned.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think the original thing sounded fairly promising. So I think everybody was kind of on board with it when, when the building first, the school first closed it and they had some.
I feel like the city actually owned it before.
I think they did.
Did they?
I'm pretty sure that they owned it.
I think they owned it.
And they sold it to.
Okay.
I wish I could remember.
Well, it's been two different things. I think originally it was supposed to be like for troubled teens or something.
Yes, that's.
That was the plan and then that fell through and it sat vacant for a while. And then I heard something recently was going on, but.
And I, I'll just tell you, like, every call that we're on from Minnesota D, you know, that helped fund, um, things like Emerson Union and they helped fund these buildings that went from a public building to, you know, and that they just have very little taste in their mouth for that type of, it just, the cost is so overbearing to the public to redo these things as public housing that it is literally cheaper to knock it down and start over.
Well, and it, it does always beg the question, if the building is in such bad shape that the school can't use it anymore efficiently, then how are we supposed to do better?
Yeah.
With a building that is old and needs major repairs?
Maybe we should approach, um, Given and have a group set up or whatever, meeting with the superintendent, or the, the school board, talking about what we're going to, what, what are their plans? Do they just plan to put it for sale? And let them know what our concerns are. It'd be nice if we could work out some kind of a joint payment for.
Yeah, it could both and contribute something to it.
School pays half or be.
Would be appropriate 'cause it, it really is unbalanced. We're already paying
Yeah.
the full school district tax and basically dealing with that building is gonna fall on.
A million dollars that would be put on our taxes, just our taxes.
It is.
I know when, um, the superintendent previous was here, I know that they did put together a congressional direct spend request through the state, but I think that was the year that they didn't do a bond model.
It was. Yeah. That was when there was surplus and there might have been some money.
Has there been any discussion at all with the, the school or superintendent?
You can ask him once or twice.
Once or twice, yeah. I think he's trying to get the new building open.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that as a city, we, we wanna work with them and we want something good to come of it, whether it's demolishing it or if there's a cost-effective way to find a reuse for something. But I, I just don't think it's fair that it's, I don't think it's fair that the only way we can have some input about what happens to it is if we pay the full price.
Well, the input would be if somebody decided to purchase it.
Right.
And then come to us and then we're gonna be sitting like Gaylord. Or somebody else owns it now, they can't do anything with it.
Yeah.
That would be my, uh.
Go back to the school district and see if they can help us.
Start working on a, I, I, I wish I knew how they felt. I mean, have they given it any thought at all?
I mean, I, I know they have. I know that the, the, um, for instance, uh, one of the other districts approached GFW to see if they could get the bleachers from our old football field, like, and the first thing he did is Alan emailed me and was like, would you guys care if they were just, I don't, you know, gone by the time you got there? I'm like, no. The, the less that's there, the better.
Yeah.
So I know that they're mindful of it and I, I know that they, you know, what's happening in, you know, Gaylord and Fairfax and all over the state of Minnesota, um, is that these individuals cannot handle the, the burden. Um, you know, the school district has a budget like ten times what ours is and they couldn't fix them. So, um, we can do something like a mutual understanding that they're gonna continue to work on finding a fund source to take down the building.
So when the whole, um, the whole idea for a new school was brought up, did they plan, like, were there any plans on what would happen to the old buildings then? You know, when all this was going?
I understood that there was money in there, a million bucks or whatever it was, to tear the schools down. But maybe that's just a grant you're.
Not directly in the referendum. There was not.
No.
It was a, we're, we're gonna get the referendum passed, but then we're gonna ask the state of Minnesota to give each city a million dollars to demolish the buildings.
Does it, should we try to ask Given if they wanna be in a, I mean, it seems reasonable. They're gonna have a similar.
Yeah, that's why I was saying we get together with.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I just talked to Dana about it, see what their thoughts are, what, but they wanted part of the school, I thought, Given.
I don't know if that's true.
I, I think it might be sort of like our, our surveys. I mean,
Yeah.
in theory, if, if you ask me, I'd say, yeah, let's turn it into apartments and make it a, you know, community center. It sounds fantastic. And then you see the, you know, twenty million dollar price tag and you go, that's not so fantastic. So until you have an actual, you know, some sort of cost estimate, it's pretty hard to say what you wanna do with the building.
But we should get started with that, at least.
And I know it's been said several times, but. And I know it's been said several times, but should not fall on our citizens and our citizens alone.
Should not.
And so the citizens, it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
And I keep thinking about Fairfax, but that's what happened to them, or. Apparently, I don't know if they wanted the building or what.
But they were able to sell the building.
Well, that's true, they maybe, yeah, they maybe did get something for it.
And I, I thought this, yeah, I don't think.
Not.
No.
All right, okay. We'll take that back and get the city's.
That sounds good. Thank you for the background on that. All right, four point three, approving the Minnesota paid family medical leave policy. The admin committee went over this, um, it's in your packet. Michael or Heather, you wanna give us the?
So this is the new and improved family medical leave that's gonna be taking effect in 2026, starting January first. There have been several meetings and phone calls as to how it's gonna work, how it's gonna operate. It's changed probably fifty-two thousand times so far, and it's still going to continue to change. We took our policy guidelines based off of what the state is saying we should put in effect at this point, but it may change at a later date. Um, that's why at the end of the policy, it states will be updated as needed. Yeah, and there's not really a whole lot of new information about it. They came out with forms and stuff on how they're gonna track each type of leave. That was the most recent update as of last week.
We solved things at the admin committee, like how, how much do we want them to be able to take on intermittently? Are we gonna allow them to do fifteen minute intervals? Are they gonna have a full day off? Those are what's really in the policy, and admin, I think, did a really good job at kind of making sure that we crossed our Ts, dotted our Is on the policy. I, um, it also talks about it running concurrent with FMLA, um, which I think is really important. And that, you know, any, um, intermittent leaves would have to be managed through the city administrator. And this will apply, just so you guys know, to fire, ambulance.
Everyone.
Uh, city council, it applies to everyone at this time. I am certain that they'll change it.
They're gonna be.
This is just gonna be like ESS to yell over again.
Yeah.
So the funding source for the pay is an insurance.
Trying to figure out what that means.
Yeah, so.
Short-term disability?
What is it?
Short-term disability.
STD, short-term disability, LTD is long-term disability. Yeah, STD, not that, not that, Kelly.
I was just wondering, I never realized that. Put a claim specifically for that.
What was your question then?
I, I'm clarifying, the funding source to pay the paid leave is an insurance policy, am I correct, that the city?
Kind of, it's a premium that the employee pays forty-four percent of, and then the city pays the other forty, or point four-four percent, not forty-four percent, sorry. And then it all gets put into a giant pool at the state, so all these employers are paying into that pool. And then when they go to take the leave, they have to get it approved through a medical professional, of course, and then it is administered, sort of like unemployment, it's totally administered through the state. That part where they get paid and all that, that's not us. The only part that we would administer is like if they take vacation time or short-term disability, long-term disability, that is our role in it.
Okay.
Which gets plugged into another system for tracking, so they know what we're paying versus what they're paying.
Yeah, and our, our tax implications, just for this one program from the state of Minnesota, the point four-four percent is about six thousand dollars. So it's about a half a percent of our levy that just got tacked on this year.
And it's, it's graduated if you're, it, it, the amount you collect is based on your income. So if you're on the lower end of the income scale, you'll get up to ninety percent, I think, of your,
Yes.
your weekly or monthly income, or whatever it is, and then that gradually drops, the higher your income is, so.
We made it really easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the higher your income is, the more you pay to fund the lower income, that gets the more paid.
I didn't think about that.
Correct.
Thanks.
It's a correct system.
Yeah.
I saw a move to approve it.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion in a second to accept the paid family medical leave policy, um, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. All right, four point four, approval of donations.
Um, this is the resolution that would accept the donations, those twenty-one fifty from Burn, Burnick Farms LLC, and the two thousand dollars from the Minnesota Chiefs Association. Both will be earmarked for Conklin Hill spending this coming spring. Um, and the chief can talk about that in a little while, but, um, they have, they, he applied for it and wanted a specific use for it, so.
Great.
All right.
So who to accept?
No second.
Ed's, I can, I don't, any discussion, any discussion? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, same side, motion carried. Four point five, soil borings.
Um, I do not have a quote yet back from this, so I don't want you guys to take action on it, but I just wanted to explain where this is coming from, so, um, the fire ambulance building we're gonna hopefully talk about next month, uh, we have gone through about twenty-five iterations of it. It's really hard, um, I, I will just say that that committee has worked really, really hard on trying to find a, a building structure in addition to the fire hall that, um, number one, financially makes sense, and number two, really sets us up to future use. Uh, unfortunately, we just have to continue to make it smaller, uh, cuz the cost of a building right now is extremely high. So we'll bring that back to you guys, but, uh, I'll bring it back to you all in one piece. The soil borings, I would assume, are gonna cost between six to ten thousand dollars. But we can't get construction documents until we know if we need soil corrections, or if it's a stable surface to build on. So, um, I'll bring that back to you guys next month, I thought honestly he would have them to me today, and he did not, so.
So we'll just skip over that. Okay, um, I think I'll look forward to hearing that next time. Four point six, the resolution, um, bought the enterprise payments back to the general fund.
Every month we make payments out of our general fund, and we're just making it right before the audit at the end of the year. Um, electric owes the general fund back for some streetlight, um, materials, and for transformers, and then likewise, the water department. Uh, we did a well repair, I think you guys remember well, too, had to get repaired. Um, we paid for that out of the general fund, and the water fund is just gonna pay us back.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Martha, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kelly, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All of us in favor, please say aye. Oh, same side, motion carried. Four point seven, preliminary budget review.
I just wanted you guys to give, um, some perspective and some updates on some of the things that we know have changed since our budget has passed. So health insurance came back to us, so, um, brief history, we used to have Health Partners, and Health Partners dropped not all small policies, but most small policies, including ours, um, last year. So in February, we switched to Blue Cross Blue Shield. It came in cheaper, we're like, hey, this is good, it was fifteen percent cheaper than our old rates. Well, we got our estimate back, it's nineteen point one percent higher. Um, that accounts for about thirty-six thousand dollars worth of change.
Ninety percent higher than the?
Than the previous year. It's nineteen point one percent higher.
So actually, like, of their?
Of their original.
Ninety percent of their original, okay, so it's an increase, but not quite as bad as it would have been if we'd stayed with Health Partners, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, very small.
I'm trying to look under.
Very small, okay, well.
Everyone's getting.
About four percent higher than.
Paid family medical leave act was about six thousand dollars extra this year, uh, well, for twenty-twenty-six, excuse me. And then, um, for property insurance, so in twenty-twenty-three, we paid thirty-seven thousand nine hundred fif, let's just call it thirty-eight thousand. Um, in twenty-twenty-four, that jumped to fifty-eight thousand six eighty-four. We changed our premium this year, so if we have.
Deductible.
Our deductible this year, and so our premium went down about two hundred dollars, so fifty-eight to thirty-three. However, if we pay just two claims, we are gonna lose a bunch of money. Uh, it'll, it'll go up by almost ten thousand dollars. So just keep that in mind, if we, if we get two claims, our deductible is much higher than it used to be. And two claims sets us even for an almost twenty percent increase. But right now, we're saving five hundred dollars year over year. Workers' compensation insurance, so in twenty-twenty-three, we were just paying thirty-five thousand dollars, seemed reasonable. In twenty-twenty-four, it raised to fifty-two thousand dollars. And in twenty-twenty-four, we took an audit, that audit said, hey, City of Winthrop, you guys owe us twenty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. So our twenty-twenty-five budget for those premiums, that, that includes that almost twenty percent increase. So, uh, we went from thirty-five to fifty-two to almost seventy thousand dollars for workers' compensation. So, um, there is a lot of things that we can't control, workers' comp is one of those. You know, we're on that state system that, um, unfortunately, the Twin Cities metro areas are seeing a lot of work comp cases. There's just, there's just not a lot we can do, um, about those costs. We, you know, we did definitely push back on property insurance, uh, we, we, we lowered, uh, the amount that we're covered for. But the, those are the main things that have moved, uh, the budget within the last, um, month or so. Um, and it's, it's still putting us at a preliminary levy almost exactly about, um, oops, I opened the wrong one, um, that we proposed at the preliminary hearing.
What about the funding for the police department, did we find out how much that was going to be?
What do you believe by that?
I thought there was some question about that.
Yeah.
Oh, the state aid, yep.
Yep, that was put in there, I believe, once he pulls that up, we can see, but it was around fifty-one, fifty-two thousand.
And that's kind of what we expected?
Yeah, I was saying that's.
Yep.
Yeah, so you can see our final right now, that would be the ones where we changed the totals, is now at seventeen point nine. Um, and the police, that's under, is it under revenue?
No, it's under police.
I think.
Whoa.
No, you might be right, it might be under.
I think it's under revenue, and we're broken.
Okay.
We're back, and we're broken. Okay, I'm not looking at that one.
I feel like it's under pay.
What is going on with that one?
It's not happy.
It's the woman we just replaced.
I know.
Is that like a bad spy, is there like a ghost?
Okay, if you get seizures, don't look over this.
I know.
Now I'm gonna turn it off.
I was thinking.
Oh, dear.
Fifty even.
That was the police.
No, it's fifty-one nine six nine four three is what it came in at.
Okay.
The blue. That's what it came in at this year. But averaged over the last three.
It's about fifty.
We budgeted fifty. This is the year before it went down, and with all the decreases and everything that they were talking about this year, it's not guaranteed for next year. So we're finger crossing, hoping.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions about budget figures?
Work comp insurance, you said we're on a state program.
Uh, the League of Minnesota Cities.
Yeah.
It's where most of the cities get their work comp.
Wonder if there's cheaper options.
There's other options, but I can guarantee you they're not cheaper.
Yeah, I would, I mean, the League of Minnesota Cities, most of that insurance, yeah.
Yeah.
I know it. Jenny just went to two, and I was like, wow.
My property insurance went up almost forty percent over last year.
I, I think if, when we talked about putting this on the, the agenda for tonight, I, I think it's just important for anybody here and anybody watching this later or reading the paper, that council and especially staff really, really have worked on the budget, they keep working on the budget, and we are trying to contain costs as much as we can. Nobody likes the seventeen point nine percent. But there are some things this year that are just so far out of our control. I, I don't know that any of us have any more creative ways to.
Yeah, just a reminder to council too, um, so last year, we cut all of our funding mechanisms and categories by seventeen percent. So we cut the fat last year, um, and had a very small levy raise, um, while other cities around us were having double digits. The year before that, we cut expenditures by almost thirteen percent. Um, that is exactly when we started implementing the double approval for all invoices, so, you know, we, we send an invoice through for ambulance, Ed approves it or denies it and says, nope, this isn't mine, this is yours. We started controlling expenses, um, far greater than we probably ever had before, to make sure that our numbers were accurate, so that when we went to council, we could say, yep, you can cut that budget, because we know we don't use, you know, X, Y, and Z numbers. Um, but, but last year, we cut almost twenty percent of expenditures with rising costs, you know, those, those cost increases between twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, just in workers' compensation was twenty grand, insurance was almost forty grand. You know, those things, we already accounted for last year, so where other cities are maybe cutting some of those fatty expenses that they had in there, we, we've already done that the last two years. And, you know, I, I don't know how else to explain lower revenue and higher costs, it, it just, it just continues to hurt the cities.
I mean, as an example, we cut a full-time position in the city front office, that was in twenty, oh, twenty, for twenty-five.
For twenty.
Yeah, it was in twenty-five budget, yes.
And now we're doing that again with the library budget, knowing that it had an impact of almost ten to fifteen percent.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we have not backed away from some tough decisions.
So is this gonna be finalized at our, at our next work session?
Um, not in the next work session, so, um, the mayor and I proposed that November twenty-fourth, it's a Monday, we'll have a work session for budget. I'll send it to your calendars, but we will not actually finalize it until truth and taxation, which will be December first. Um, so just a reminder, we have a public hearing obligation in the state of Minnesota, and that is truth and taxation, that is our first meeting. If for some reason that meeting is canceled, I don't know why, snowstorm, uh, um, it would be the following Monday, that's our backup meeting.
We should also, um, people, if the public can attend the work session if they would like to.
Oh, absolutely.
People are welcome to come in.
And I liked how we did the work sessions in the past, and you can, um, say yea or nay to that, but I thought, you know, after each category, we gave people an opportunity to speak.
Really well.
It was good.
Yeah, I think so too, I would, I'd probably like to continue that, so we would just, after every budget category, we would, you know, have time for some comment from people who have, you know, whose taxes it's gonna impact, so.
That's starting at seven.
Seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that state statute too, so you can't actually have truth and taxation before six P M anyway, so we just have, I think, historically done it during the meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on the budgets? All right, then we'll move on to four point eight, Winthrop Police Department Annual Audit. Logan, you wanna come and give us a update? Logan, you wanna come and give us a update?
So this is just our, so state statute requires that you do a biannual, um, body camera audit, and there is an extensive, like, four-page li- list of things that you have to cover. And, um, through the company that we chose to do our audit, um, they came back and said that we were compliant with everything, and we got our certificates, so, um, it was a long process, but it, like I said, it's over two years' worth of body camera footage that was looked over and made sure that the retention periods are, uh, being used properly, and, yeah, it was a lot of stuff that you probably don't really care about, but it was a long process.
Is this an annual thing or?
Biannual, yeah, it was two years.
So, you should get a little reprieve.
Yes, right.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Unless you have any questions, that's pretty much all I got for you, it's nothing too crazy, but there is the full report there for you to review too.
Thanks for getting a grant to, or applying for that.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Do you want to explain that process to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the Chiefs of Police Association, they have a foundation, um, and this year, they were really trying to, um, do community grants so that police departments across the state could, um, have some funds to do new things in their community. And, uh, so I applied for it, it was over twenty five hundred dollars. We were awarded two thousand dollars, so everyone got eighty percent of what they requested. And what I proposed, um, I called it slice and slide with cops in Conklin Hill. So I was thinking, I already talked, uh, with Mr. Treblehorn, and, uh, we're gonna get pizza from there, we have the heated garage in the, at the P D there, um, and then buy, um, tubes, sleds for the hill. And at, in that process, I was like, well, we're gonna spend substantial amount of money on new tubes and, and sleds and whatnot. I want a place that they can be used all winter long, not just the one time that we do this event, right? So I had met with Katie Grand, and we kind of just figured out what would be best. And initially, I reached out for, uh, Dakota Storage Sheds to see if they could, um, see if they could help us with that process. They were willing to help us, but not enough to cover that. And then Katie, um, was approached by Bert Honnell, and then Honnell B's decided that they, uh, were going to donate that shed that's now over by the P D. So that'll be a really cool space, that's a warming shed for kids to warm up in, and also store our tubes and sleds that I want to donate, I, it'll still be our property, but donate it to the hill so kids can use it all winter long, so.
That's nice.
All right.
Yeah.
That's very nice, yeah.
Worked out really good.
Right, thank you.
And then in addition to that, just so you guys are aware too, I did submit the grant, cause we worked su- such close with, uh, Gaylor P D, that it would be nice for our community and their community to come together. Um, and so we're inviting their officers and people, their entire community over to the hill too, so it'd be kind of a cool collaboration of everyone get to know the officers.
Useful to town.
Do you have a date for that?
Yeah, so February, uh, third, I believe it is, is that first?
Probably a good idea.
Yeah, so this is all contingent on weather too, right? Unfortunately, um, but that's what we're looking at is for that, that first weekend in February, is February third, uh, right before the Super Bowl, so hopefully we can all get out on the hill and be wore out and then watch the bowl game later.
Well, Steve Sax will be the first one down the hill. Yep.
Well, I think he has to, I think that was in the contract.
Can't you put a grant in for making snow?
That's a great idea.
I mean, I'm just thinking like Mount Kido or something like that.
Yeah.
Call it in.
Just call it in. If it snows a bunch though, we'll just have Troy push it all down the hill, so we can have our even bigger hill, so, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Cool.
All right, and do you have any other questions for Logan?
Thanks, Logan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, nice to have some good news like that. All right, moving on to four point nine, the resolution about the E D A.
Hi, everyone. So the E D A has been actually really busy, I know I reported that last meeting, but, um, uh, I had, you have some updates on my admin report, but this is, uh, to help get Hans back open. So the E D A was approached by, uh, Mr. Brooks, who is going to be the owner of Hans Restaurant. I, I will say this first, so the E D A went through a process last year that, um, slowed the amount of loans that we gave um, through a very, I would say, more stringent guidelines and process. We, uh, you know, you know, got approached by them, they filled out an application, and we were like, yeah, this sounds like a great idea, but you need a business plan. So for thirty days, maybe a little bit over thirty days, they worked with SCORE, um, and some of our business coaches through REV, and they came up with a really good business plan. You know, they've critiqued it, they gave, got feedback from the E D A, uh, in early September, they came back to the E D A in September seventeenth and said, okay, I think we're right, I think we're ready to go for the full thing. We checked their creditworthiness through Mid Country Bank, that's their bank that they chose for their commercial lender. And, uh, this would be, unlike most of our other loans, this will be a contract for deed. So the E D A will own the building in conjunction with Mid Country Bank. So we'll own fifty percent, they'll own fifty percent, uh, the estimated market value is over the loan amount at this point. And we felt comfortable with it. There's also equity from, uh, the Brooks family that they're putting into it as well. Uh, any renovations or remodels that are gonna go and take place, um, actually are coming out of pocket from the equity that the owner is putting into it. The E D A, uh, had their meeting last week or the week before, um, approved this and brought it to city council because this is more monies than we have in our account currently. Um, the E D A has not received its normal stipend from the state city as well, um, so that would not be on top of this. We're asking to just flush across the board the one forty, not including the sixty thousand dollars that we, um, were budgeted for, that, that would not include on top of that, so, um, there are contingency funds that we can use for this. I will tell you that, uh, alone by itself, I don't know if the bank would fully fund it. If you haven't heard, seventy percent of restaurants fail in the first year. Banks are very, uh, risk averse, and this is something that they normally don't do. Uh, but because the loan is covered basically by the estimated market value of the building, um, they felt pretty comfortable going forward. And Dave's here because of that, too, so if you have any questions, you can ask Dave.
Sure. So how's the, uh, contract for deed written up, uh, repairs, anything like that, that's all the owner?
Yeah, so how it's going to be written up is all repairs, ownership, um, taxes, uh, insurance on the building, that is all paid for by them. We don't have anything to do with the operating business, equipment.
But do we require insurance and so on?
Yep, property insurance, liability insurance.
And what would the interest rate be?
Well, right now, it's four point two five percent, but I think the feds are lowering or are going to lower, so it depends on when we, when we settle, and that's why, that's really why they're going after the E D A money, is because it is much cheaper than the bank right now, and it brings their loan total amount at the end of the day much lower, so it allows them to operate at a little bit higher. You know, I would say on a monthly average, it costs, just in utilities, about three to five thousand dollars to run that building. So, you know, if you can save five to six hundred dollars on your loan.
So we have money market that we?
We do.
Okay, and what is the interest that we're making? I don't wanna make less money than what we're making on it right now.
That's gonna go down as well.
Well, true.
So we always charge the exact same amount that we would make on our CDs or four M fund, we charge the same amount on our loans. So if we're making four point eight percent on the four M, we lock them in at four point eight.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, and that bounces every month, it bounces around.
But once it's set, it's set to the contract.
Once we set it, we set it.
Dave?
Aaron Wall is putting this all together, and he has done it before, so this isn't his first rodeo with this kind of project paperwork, whatever you wanna call it.
And the reason that we went for a contract for deed is because it is a legally binding contract, it's not a, um, loosey-goosey contract that, you know, we have this understanding of the law, not this, if they stop paying, we start taking over. We just take the building, kick them out, and move on.
What about the bank?
They would do, do a repossession.
How's it gonna be working with the bank on that?
So we have already talked to Mid Country about it, and, um, we're still in the final stages of discussion. Unfortunately, one of their employees left at Mid Country, so we're dealing with a new person, which is fine. Um, but they have done this before, um, many, many times down in downtown Hutchinson. Basically, what happens if we ask for foreclosure, the first entitled lien holder also will follow in time. So, hey, you haven't paid the E D A for six months, here's your notice, you have ninety days to operate, and then we're taking everything.
So is that all gonna be specified?
Yep, and the reason we're doing contract for deed is Minnesota is a very legal document, it is very black and white in courts.
And when would the payments start?
Just depends on when we get the loan going. But they would start immediately the next month.
They, they would, I, I was just gonna say, is there gonna be?
With this loan amount, we would want the money back as soon as possible.
The other thing with the E D A felt, they had a piece of collateral. In the past, there's been some loans in with no collateral.
Right.
And so this is what the E D A thought, well, we have a piece of collateral, you know, like Michael said, the estimated market value is right up there where the loan is, between the bank and E D A.
So between the bank and the E D A, it's, it's two forty-four or a little less?
The bank is a little bit less because they're putting their own equity in it. So one of the guidelines of the E D A now is that we will not invest anything more than fifty percent.
Of the value.
Of the value, so I think the bank is actually doing a hundred, the Brooks's are doing forty, and we're doing one forty. So it's exactly fifty fifty.
And I think that's one of the E D A additions too, is that the, the party asking for funds from the E D A has to have some of their own.
Yes.
Money invested.
Correct.
And I, I think, I just wanna echo, echo what Michael said about the E D A changing their guidelines, it, they, it really is good, it's much more detailed than it used to be. And, um, you know, in, in this instance, we got a much more detailed business plan, and, you know, they worked with a business consultant to, you know, think about some of the things they maybe hadn't before, um, so I think that's encouraging.
Yeah, they looked at hours of operations, future projected income.
Trying to keep a business open downtown.
I feel comfortable.
And they're, I mean, they're really excited about it, and they want to be part of the Winthrop community, and, um, I, I get the impression, listening to them, that they're not just trying to open a business because it's what they wa- I mean, it's what they wanna do, obviously, but they want to do something good for our community too, which is encouraging.
Right outside of Winthrop, they live just south of the golf course.
He is on the fire department also.
He is also on the fire department.
Brandon, Brandon.
She's on the L O A with the ambulance. She's on a leaf of absence with the ambulance.
Okay.
She's expecting.
We spent about two and a half hours, not last Sunday, but the Sunday before, going over the business plan, going over the contract for deed, really detailing out some of those things, um, that I think are important for them to understand, you know? You don't pay us, we're gonna come after it, we're not just gonna sit around and, and wait for it. I think they're ready to start a business, they're, Brandon's family actually just bought the restaurant over in, um.
Cleveland.
Thank you, Cleveland, I'm a C Le Sueur, it's Cleveland, um, and flipped it, and, uh, it's doing very nice. So I think they're taking some of the experience from that, and, uh, gonna duplicate it over here.
Good. All right, council, what are your wishes?
I'll move to approve this resolution.
Motion by Ed, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jenny. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. All right, um, moving on to four point ten, the public open forum. We did, um, we just sort of, well, we discussed it plenty last month, but we, um, had talked about the possibility of a listening session, and we said we would come back to discuss that, so.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to, um, fifty minutes before our meeting, you know, six forty-five, four or seven, to have an open public forum for people that want to, um, talk to the council, discuss with the council. Whatever, you know, they, they want at that time, and then at seven o'clock, we'd have our, our regular meeting, um.
And I, I think we, well, I wanted some feedback from the city attorney, and I think the city attorney's been awfully busy, because we haven't gotten answers to some bigger questions than that. But before we would agree to that, I would just like to know if we would be, you know, in the same position we were before, where we would just have to sit and, and listen and not respond, because that really is, while it does give a resident a, a forum, it doesn't give us the opportunity to have any discussion or even answer a question, um, and, and I.
Well, that was during the meeting, and I, I wanna know if, do we have to open a meeting up in order to have a public?
It would still, you'd still have a forum, so it would still be a public meeting.
Or we could have it at the end, because I know one of your concerns was if we had people that we were paying waiting here, you know, get all the other business done, and then at the end of the meeting, if anybody wanted to speak.
I don't like the end of the meeting, cause I don't wanna be here till ten o'clock at night. I personally will not sit here at the beginning of the meeting and listen to, I, I will decide tomorrow if we go back to that. And whatever that means. Oh, I, I. Absolutely not.
It is hard when, you know, we can't have. And so, interestingly, I often say, I'm surprised at how seldom people actually contacted me about anything. And in the week after, um, last month's meeting, I got an email from someone, it said, hi Julie, just reaching out to share, we don't agree with having the open forum at the regular city council meetings. Submitting items for the agenda ahead of the meeting makes the most sense, so the council can do research prior to the meeting and be able to address the issues. Thank you all for your service. And I had, um, a text from somebody who said, um, I've never actually sat down and listened to the council meetings, but I decided to do that this morning, and after listening to the most recent council meeting, I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate everything you guys do for the city. I think it makes complete sense to eliminate public forum, the way you explained it made so much more sense. If people want to have a back and forth discussion, that's the best way to go. And I, I did hear from other people too, but those stood out to me that they were completely unsolicited. And even about tax issues or other big things, I, if I get a couple of emails about something, I'm kinda surprised. So, um, I think that just says something that a lot of people in the community do like the, you know, putting, being put on the agenda and having that as an avenue to get something accomplished efficiently.
I agree with you, I won't go back to the way it was.
Yeah, I was, sit here and get slammed for over thirty minutes, and then we couldn't do anything, and I won't do it.
It is really difficult, because I, I wanted to respond so many times, you know, whether it was to answer a question or to correct something that they thought was happening or wasn't happening. And, and we can't, and that's, that puts us in a really uncomfortable position, it makes it look like we don't care and we're not listening, and it's, it's really truly the opposite.
And it started off our meetings very negative and.
Yeah, it was, it was a little hard to get anywhere after that. I, I think if, if we do anything, I think it would be to encourage anybody within the city who has something they want to discuss. They can, they can contact any one of us, they can come into the city and talk to Heather or Michael, they can, they can email or call any one of us. It, it could be an email, it doesn't even have to be a face-to-face thing, you know, our emails are all available, and they, you know, they could say, hey, I'd like to talk about this, it could be, I would be happy to call and meet with anybody who wants to, we, we. We, we can put, they don't even have to come to a meeting if they don't want to. I mean, they could ask for an issue to be put on the agenda and with enough time before the meeting, we'll put it on the agenda and we will be prepared with some background information and we could take action on it right there and not have to put it off. So personally, I think the best thing we could do would be just to encourage the public to make use of the avenues that we have because it is efficient and we do want to hear from people and we want to be able to react as quickly and efficiently as we can to their concerns. So, I mean, it is a, it's an information item pretty much. We didn't, we don't have to take any action.
And that is true. I know that one of the questions were if they want to get in the agenda, did they have to be on the agenda like three days?
It's three days, yeah.
But if they bring it to one of us, we can add it to the agenda.
We could, but the problem is if you bring it that night, we won't have any background.
It would have to be thought about. I mean.
Yeah, I think we, you know.
If we're prepared to.
And the example I always go back to is the parking that we decided on a whim at one meeting. Remember that? And we make it in parking and, you know, we should have, we should have done a little homework first. So. I would like to keep moving forward as we are and just keep encouraging people to talk to us. We're, we're not hard to find. We're not hard to talk to. We're, we're all really friendly. So, I mean, unless somebody has other wishes, I think we'll move forward as we are. Okay. Then we can move on to four point eleven. Do you have a firefighter joining the department?
So going forward, you guys are going to get resolutions with the firefighters because they are considered city employees. And when we go to Para, they ask for the resolution. So you'll see these just like police officers now and ambulance will begin to do the same thing. We're just going to, every time we hire or have a new volunteer, we're just going to do a resolution. Seems like they need it more and more.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jenny, second by Ed. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Pose, same sign.
What's our member?
Yeah, roster count?
Yeah, roster at, is it full or?
No, they're about five down.
Oh, right.
From last year.
So they'll continue to recruit?
Yeah, and I think they actually have two more in the hopper. They just haven't done the interview yet.
Okay. So are we done with all that? We can move on to committee reports? All right, admin, what you got for us?
Sure. I have a list of things, but I just want to talk about streams really quick. On October twenty-first, some of you were there. I appreciate you showing up. The four cities that came to the streams presentation in front of the Minnesota House Capital Investment Committee, it went really well. The feedback from them was they liked the regional concept. They wish that more cities could get together and dream up about these type of projects. Since then, there has been corporate representation from Michael Foods that they would also like to join the streams project. So we haven't nailed that one down yet, but we're getting there. Their affluent limits for Michael Foods just came out and they are very high. And I don't think they can actually meet them what their mechanical plan does is.
That's just saying in support of the project.
Yes. Yep. So we do have some hard deadlines. I, I put them in that thing there. But we are really, really pushing for our PPL and PSIG funding. And that's really where that four million dollars comes from, from the state, is that is just for construction documents and design. Four million. So when we're talking, you know, about these projects, that's what the capital investment committee is really worried about. It's like, can we add on to it? How, how does it work? What, is it affordable for the communities? So these are, this is that, that next phase that we're really going to be working on is constructing it. The four cities, because of our federal ask at the federal level, will have to have individual facility plans. Meaning, what would it cost to upgrade Winthrop's? What would it be cost to upgrade Lafayette? And if that combined is less than, or one facility, which it will be, that gets us higher points on the funding mechanism when we go to PSIG. Myself and Al, and I think S E H will be going to Washington DC in March to go back to our federal legislatures. We, we went there last year. We told them about our project, they love it. You know, we are asking for funding mechanisms now. Now we, now we want real money. So we're going back to them and asking for an almost thirty million dollar grant from the EPA. So as, as a lot of these towns are dealing with affluent discharge limits, we are not alone. Every single city like us is dealing with the same thing. And, you know, Lafayette, it was way ahead of this because their mechanical plant cannot get rid of some of the levels that they want them to be at. And just for their one facility, it was thirty-nine million dollars for Lafayette. So that's why regionalization in this plan, just like drinking water is going to be in twenty years when we start working on that, it will be really important to regionalize. Very important. I would also say that our industry partners are really excited about it because they want to stay here. And if we don't provide world-class infrastructure, they won't be here, right? Or they won't expand, or they won't be viable. So we have an obligation to them too, to make sure they stick around. Parks, we've had a lot of questions about splash pad. I can give you some details, but we're still working through some of it. The splash pad deconstruction is underway. So the splash pad concrete was not poured evenly last summer. And CRS, commercial retail specialists, are the ones replacing it and paying for it. We are not paying a dime over what they quoted us. They are also taking care of the extra ISG labor that is going to be needed in order to inspect it. And they're dealing with all the plantings this spring. So there's about six thousand dollars worth of plants, grass, shrubbery that goes around the splash pad that clearly could not get in this year. They, they're paying for all of that overage. That's kind of what's happening with it. I don't think they're going to pour. It's going to get really cold now and it's supposed to snow this weekend. I really doubt they'll get anything more done other than removal this year. And on, on another note, just so council knows where we're at, so we have paid VEDA. So VEDA did like the path work, reorganized the playground, did the wood chips, did the landscaping. And then that was like their project, right? They put storm sewer in, so the park drains now. I don't know if you noticed, it actually drains.
Yes, I have.
Which is great. So that's VEDA. We've paid them, we're pretty much level with them. They have some stuff next spring that they're going to have to do because of the delays. But we haven't paid CRS anything other than what the equipment is standing down in the park. So if they pull out and don't finish the project, we haven't paid them a dime. And I'm not going to until they get the fixtures up and they test correctly.
Well, I mean, if they pulled this man, that was a lot of work. I'm assuming their intention is to complete it.
I would too, but there's a, so ISG is going to test the concrete and if it's too colds, there are certain standards that they have to do. I think there's actually less water in it when it's cold. I don't know.
I, I just mean, even if they pour it in the spring.
Yep.
Would seem to be there.
Yeah. Yep. It was a lot of work.
And CRS did not pour their first pad, right?
They didn't. It was actually a subcontracted company from Rochester.
Let's hope they don't subcontract with them again.
Allegedly, they're pouring it. So the removal was done by a separate company, but CRS is, actually has their own concrete crews that pour it. So like the plumbing was all redone, the wire copper underneath it was all redone. All that stuff is getting.
I, I see there's stuff out there though. I mean, like, I don't know if it was the drains or where the water's coming from.
They're the spigots or the, where the water comes out.
Are those staying or?
Some of them are staying, some of them got replaced.
Okay.
As long as they're all working.
Yep. Yeah.
All right, well, encouraging, we haven't had two paper yet.
Then I just want to talk about EDA really quick. Sorry. The EDA is having a lot of conversations about different funding projects in the state, in the city. We were approached by a developer to go through some workforce development housing out by the industrial lot. It'll be twenty-one units, seven units each. They are going for a grant through the state of Minnesota, the Workforce Development Housing Grant. We are on board with that. The EDA did pass that. It is a matching fund, so I think they need a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of matching. That comes from the land utilities and some other things like building permits. With all of that, we won't actually probably spend a dollar on it other than.
Who's doing this?
It's a, it's an outside contract company. And since we haven't sent contracts yet, I shouldn't say who, but.
And where, where would this be, Michael?
By the industrial park. Where, you know where we're going to plant the pumpkins?
Yeah.
Just east of there. That big open field.
Where the trees are.
Yeah. And they're all electric heat, so it'll be on our electric. It'll be, it'll be a good project.
Is that a good place for housing?
As good as any.
Yeah. It's.
Got the elevator there.
We kind of talked about that at our EDA meeting because, but what we were, what we were looking at too is who's going to probably use it. Maybe people from Winfield, the ethanol plant, then they're right there. Because we talked about even kind of going north of where I live. But then, you know, maybe somebody can't drive there. Now at least they can walk over to where they're at.
And there's space. They had the same photos of buildings that this developer had done and they were, they were nice. I mean, they're not fancy, but they were really, I thought they were really well done.
And it's fourteen units?
It's twenty-one units.
Three buildings.
Yep, three buildings of seven.
All single ones.
Eleven?
No, they're, they're two levels.
Two stories.
And then he's going to do some two, did he say two and three bedrooms?
Most of them will be two.
Yeah, there'd be some, well, yeah.
I thought he said.
A lot of them were three bedrooms.
A lot of them were three bedrooms.
And then he was going to do some two.
He was going to do some two bedrooms.
One thing I did ask too is about, you know, do they keep it clean on the outside? You know?
Yeah, that was encouraging.
Are they just going to let them go down? And the guy that said his wife is in charge of that and she's really a stickler on that stuff.
Oh, so they build it and manage it? So it's not going to be for purchase, it's going to be rentals?
They're renting.
Oh, okay. And like, the part of their plan was a.
No, and it's not section eight.
Per unit.
No.
Like to store bikes and.
It's market rate. I think he said fourteen fifty.
No, but, you know, storage.
Yeah, yeah. And it's not section eight housing.
He has built.
Seven Henderson, he's doing them in Henderson and Waterville.
Yeah, I think he's the one or two of them already.
Yes.
This is Waterville, I'm pretty sure.
So they do have some going up in Henderson?
Yeah, just what he, by the Catholic church, is that where he said?
Yeah, it's a smaller.
In Henderson.
I think it's a smaller unit.
It's a smaller.
I think it's only three or four units.
Very good.
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
Is that zone, I mean, can it be out there?
Yep, they're going to have to rezone it, but it can be out there.
As long as we say it.
As long as we say it, we're just going to sell it. A lot of the problems with that lot too, just to, we talked about this at the EDA. It's a really squishy lot and so it's hard to put in industrial use business out there. So slab on great homes would be perfect.
And it also comes with a, what was it, ten by ten shed? Do you each get a ten by ten shed?
Yeah.
So each one will have, so you put your bicycle down or go, go in there with the shed.
All right.
As long as it makes its style.
Does anybody have any questions for Michael about any of that?
And then I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
In twenty seventeen, we had a bond with Good Sam on the nursing home and assisted living. I couldn't put it on the agenda today because they haven't gotten back to me and their lawyers have not. A long time ago in a land far, far away, about a decade ago, they overpaid the city of Winthrop to the tune of almost forty-two thousand dollars. It was an error in accounting on their, their side and they would like that money back now. So we, because we want to be really careful with how we deal with this, we're willing to pay it back because it's actually in an account. The overage is already in an account. But we want to make sure that they don't come back later on and say, oh, and by the way, you still owe us that forty-two thousand dollars. So we're making them sign a contract that acknowledges that it was their error that they paid it out of their own error. We have emails dating all the way back to when that happened and it was on their side. And that, you know, going forward, as long as they pay on time, the agreement will still stand. But it'll be the tune of forty-two thousand dollars in that account. But hopefully he'll read that, get his lawyers on it and we can solve that before the end of the year.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is it the home or is it the lodge?
It's the actual lodge.
The lodge, okay.
Yep.
How much, how many, long is left on that bond?
We just refinanced it in twenty twenty, so twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-nine.
So, yeah. That's about right. Okay. Any questions for Michael? All right, let's go on the list. Fire, I assume we authorized the new hires or anything else going on? Library, what about?
We did not meet, the board did not meet in October. Our next meeting is November seventeenth. Side note, the library friends had a really good fundraiser. Not sure the exact amount, but yeah, we were pleased.
Lots of good donations and lots of good bids. Public works?
Just said they're done with the streetlight project.
The streetlights look fantastic. Oh my goodness.
Yeah, they look way better. And the ones that are on the west side of Second Street, they should be getting turned on soon. So you'll have lights down there if anyone is going to ask me.
Cutting the whole ones down and then you see them go down the street.
And if anyone's wondering, the streetlights for the rest of the town will look like the ones on the west side of Second Street. That's the, with the style that we're going to go all over town. They're just much cheaper.
All right. Funding commission?
They have not met.
Okay. RS fiber, we have not met either, but RS fiber just notified me with an email that they have come to terms with Scher's, their sort of parent company, on loan restructuring, which will put the cooperative in good financial standing. So the RS fiber board is looking forward to re-engaging with ten communities and rural customers. They'd like to do some more aggressive marketing and they are thankful that cities have been patient and they are still aware of us. And I know the current board's plan is still to pay the cities back at some point if they're able to. So I would, there's probably going to be more coming out about that in the future. Let's see, utilities. Martha, do you have?
Yeah, I was able to get to the MMPA board meeting on October twenty-eighth. It was held in Chaska. We reviewed the agency's financial and operating performance for September and discussed the status of renewable projects the agency is pursuing. And participation in the residential clean energy choice program increased by thirty-six customers, so.
Yeah, okay, good news.
I think one of the other things that I took out of that meeting is Excel Energy's transmission fees are going up by over twenty percent this year. So that is definitely going to impact energy bills everywhere. So the public utility commissions of Minnesota actually denied some of their rate increases. Unfortunately, they don't have authority over transmission fees. So that's why transmission fees are also going to raise. We were going to bring this up during the budget and I forgot Heather. And Heather and I really looked at late fees lately and we really would like to lower. You know, we're increasing fees in general for utilities in twenty twenty-six. We sent those out in the bills this past month, so residents know what's going to happen. We really would like to lower it from eight percent late. We really would like to lower it from 8% late fee to 5%. And we'll give you some scenarios later on. But generally, the people that aren't paying their bill on time anyway are then taking an 8% hit on their utilities. We actually got in on this discussion on the League of Minnesota Cities Forum. And like, it is wildly different at every utility. Like some, it's like a flat fee, like you're late.
$10.
Here's $10 or $25. It's, it's nuts, the differences between all of us. But we're, I think, you know, the next budget meeting, we're, we're asking for us to actually go down so that even if they are late, it's a little bit more affordable. Just because our rate increases are going to really bump that up.
Okay. Any other questions about that? All right, ambulance, Ed, what you got?
So we've had a couple of our youth make it a little further in their testing process. So we're, we're still looking to gain more numbers here in the, in the very near future, so... It's been not as busy.
I didn't do it this time.
No, that was...
Recently, which is good. It's given us a little bit of a break in...
Driving me crazy watching it.
And then on Friday this week, a couple of us members have decided that we're going to do a, a movie and a meal downstairs. And we're going to, you know, provide the food and come in and we're going to watch this new EMT movie that's supposed to be hysterically funny.
Yes.
What?
Is it like Mall Cops or what?
No, it's, what is it called?
Hold on.
It's the guy, it's the one funny guy.
There's only one funny guy in the world?
Well, the main guy. No.
The movie is called Code Three.
Yeah.
It's, it's a new movie. And basically what it is, is you've got a seasoned EMT or paramedic training a brand new. And I can tell you that in a lot of situations, that never turns out good.
Only the driver too.
So it's going to be, it'll be a fun night. We did tell our members that alcohol was not allowed and, because it's a city building, so... Just, just wanted to make that known. And yeah, that's what we're going to do Friday at about 7 o'clock, so...
Good, great. Let's see, police, Logan, you already gave some, do you got more for us?
Yeah.
All right. Sure.
So I just kind of wanted to spotlight some recent work that we have done that kind of made public news and whatnot. But Nick stopped a vehicle and it was a pretty extensive stop that culminated in the location of several firearms, sawed-off shotgun, handgun on the individual. Also, the alleged suspect was arrested for narcotics possession and controlled substance DWI. So I, I wanted to highlight that for you guys because just is really important for you, everyone to know the important work that we're doing and the asset that, that Nick is. But he deserves a, a public shout-out for that as well. So long, ongoing investigation with that, but it was very, very good. In addition to that, this month, we have a post audit. So pretty standard post audit. I already have everything all put together and whatnot, but that will be done, I believe, on the 13th of this month.
People who post is...
Yeah.
Officers' standards and training?
Correct, yep. So it just covers, make sure that we are following policy and procedures and hiring standards and that kind of stuff. And then I wanted to make you guys aware of, so obviously I've mentioned in the past about the accreditation program that we have gone into. I was approached by the Chiefs Association to fill a vacancy for the Board of Commissioners for MinLEAP, so it's the Minnesota Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. So I'm one of six chiefs and three sheriffs that are on the board. I thought that was pretty, pretty cool that they, that they approached us for that. And with that, I will be attending the Chiefs Conference coming up here this month up in the Brainerd area. And I'm going to be an assessor for the accreditation program as well. So in, up there, I'll be trained in on how to be an assessor for new police departments or sheriff's offices that I go through the accreditation program and then I give my feedback on where they're at on that. So yeah, any questions?
Good, very good.
Michael already got me with the slice and slide, but let's promote that. I'm, I'm getting the flyer out there.
That's great.
I'm starting it now, so hopefully, I don't know if I'm as good as Michael and can, but I'll get it done.
Be sure you, you pat your officers on the back.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Cable question.
We met on Wednesday, October 22nd. And after this year, we decided to try and have quarterly meetings as we don't really have a lot to discuss. So we're going to see how that works. We approved a grant to Emmanuel Lutheran and Gaylord. And our next meeting is December 11th in Gaylord. Kind of right in between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Good. Yeah. Park committee, Don, Matt, right?
We talked a little bit about...
We passed a donation policy.
Yeah.
We, we've been getting a lot of requests for, you know, I, I want a donation of this or that. So then we wanted to put some guidelines on that.
Or people saying where they want it to go. Some of it, we are looking at all that too.
Okay.
You mean people want to donate to the park?
Yeah, or like a memorial for somebody, but then they, they're going to, they want to tell us where they want it to be put. And so we're looking at all that. Because we could end up with something filled over here and nothing over on this side of the park, so...
I have one more thing. The GPL did donate $15,000 to the Fire Relief Association, not to the city. And I believe the Relief Association is going to use that to buy brand-new extraction tools. Those are pretty old, so they're going to go for electric. I think the Relief Association is kind of matching that, so they're going to go for two of them. You know, the new tools are more equipped to cut through the boron and all the other safety measures that are in that. So thank you to the GPL for...
Gaylord GPL.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that is good news.
So, and we had to take that out of our budget for next year.
Yeah.
And they were able to fund it other ways, so...
And then there's a bunch of dates on the bottom, just a reminder that we're closed some days in November, December, and then Christmas downtown is December 12th and 13th.
So make an effort to be there for that. I think the committee's working hard on that. If you have nothing else, if somebody would like to adjourn, you know?
So moved.
Wait a second. Sorry. Thank you. I was thinking we were staying here all night. Al's in favor, please say aye. Happy evening, everybody.